We're getting ready to start our Greenwood City Council meeting for the month of August. Let us stand with a prayer and then the pledge. Let us all bow please. Lord God, we come today thanking you, Lord God. Thank you, Lord, for all the blessings bestowed upon us, Lord. Lord, we ask that you bless this meeting today, Lord. We ask that the decision we make are beneficial to all citizens, not just citizens of Greenwood, but citizens all over the world, Lord. Lord, we ask that you bless our mayor in his absence. He's feeling a little ill today, Lord. Bless him to get better, Lord. Lord, we ask blessings in thy son Jesus' name. If your heart say amen.
Amen.
The pledge, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, council, good afternoon, everybody. How everybody doing today? To my knowledge, the agenda will go as printed. If there is no question, the chair will entertain a motion to adopt the working agenda. The motion been made and been seconded. All in favor, right hand. Pose the same sign, motion carried. As you all heard me say, the mayor is feeling ill today. I didn't know. Is Dr. Bush in the audience?
No, sir, I just don't think she came.
Huh?
She in the office.
She in the office, okay. I didn't know if she had a mayor report or not, okay. Alright. Next, on the presentation order, we've got a request to have Acting Chief Clifton King bonded and added as authorized signer for the police department petty cash account. Yes, sir.
Should that be done with a resolution vote on or just a...
The target. Uh, I think with it in the agenda and I think everything would be in a resolution is in the agenda. I think you'll vote on it with a proper motion and second.
But that makes it legal without having a...
Uh, as long as Vicky records the vote and the motion at the minute, I think it's fine.
So if you come back and bring one at one time and then resolution, so you can have it filed?
I'll prepare a resolution.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, sir.
There's not a resolution ready for this now? There's not a resolution?
To my knowledge, I wasn't asked to prepare one.
For you, it could be a resolution, right?
Typically, yes, ma'am. I can have it from the first meeting and second.
Chief King, how, and you hear, how important is this to be done right away for you?
We have several meetings with tags out. We can't get tags or anything like that.
Okay.
We have some meetings that's tag expired.
Okay. Alright. So to me, that's important. So I think the board needs to go on to approve this today.
I don't have a problem, President. As long as you're trying to give one back there for the record though.
Okay.
Just to comprehend.
As long as it's something in the agenda and it's shown in the minutes, I know it's legal.
I agree, I agree, I agree, you know. Yeah. I said, if Vicky record it, I'm good with it. Uh, you know, if Vicky record it, I'm good with it.
Can I understand that? Well, you have a resolution. That's what I'm talking about, the resolution. But I can't understand everything being legal, what you recording and everything. But I want to have it clear about a resolution. Okay, I'm with it, King. I'm with it.
President, I think it'd be better if you just bring one back prepared for your next meeting. If it's turned on, I'll prepare on the next meeting. That way we speak to our members also, our resolution also. I think that's right.
Chair entertain a motion on that?
I second the motion.
Alright, motion been made and seconded. All in favor, right hand, please. Pose the same sign, motion carried. Public agenda, the first we have is Mr. Marcelo's great.
Good evening, good evening.
Yes, sir, Mr. Gray.
Good, how everybody doing?
Alright.
My brethren for being here this evening, you know, I've been watching the last meeting and the thing that been going on. And we'll never be able to fix the problem that we have that we ain't able to work together. And my suggestion, you know, the suggestion come from, you know, me feeling, you know, the way I feel about me being out here in these streets, having jobs and everything. And if we can't come together to build our city, what we gonna do? You know, I understand everybody got a job, everybody got a job to do, you know, me as a citizen. With family members that live here, people that I know and love. And we got to do better about what we do here in this city. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir. Next is Mr. Andrew Nolan of Affordable Employee Benefits. Come on in, Andrew.
How is everybody? Thank y'all for your time. Yes, please. Let's flip to the page. There's some material in here referencing what, how you were priced before switching to us and what this price is. And unfortunately, fortunately, after we wrote and saved y'all probably close to half a million bucks, if not more, and took you out, took you out of that risk of being self-funded, we were able to hold that price steady for a couple of years, two years actually. And, but the issue was, this year, that a low price and you start having a whole bunch of claims, I might run out of, I might run out of crops. They all have one, okay, good, thank you. And then the mayor's watching, I was looking forward to having a first board meeting with him, but maybe, maybe we'll get him to see next time. And, but look, it, there's nothing wrong with the insurance. Insurance is performing great. It's going up because it paid, okay? Paid too much. It paid out way more than y'all are paying in. And when it does that, to, to be able to afford the claims, it has to raise the price a little bit. Had some bad claims. This past month was the worst. I went back after getting a renewal, hoping that a new, a good month would come through. But you've had, y'all had, this past month, if we'd have had a good month, you know, we might have had something to argue about on our behalf. Hey, you had a good month of claims. Let's try to get it. Do you mind coming off that price increase a little bit? Well, it was not a good month. Um, let's see here. They were, uh, on the blue cross side, you paid in fifty-eight thousand, they paid out a hundred ninety-two thousand in one month. And they're forecasting to pay out a good bit more. You paid in fifty-eight, they paid out one ninety-two. Just that one month was almost, what is that? About four times?
Yeah, that's about it, right.
So, uh, but we appreciate your business and the plans that we have you with are who we have most of our customers with, you know? It's not, nothing wrong with the plan. It did its job. Uh, and to remind everybody, we adopted a big preventive healthcare initiative for the city where we had a bus and we had people to try to incorporate preventive healthcare. And that's, we're still gonna, to try to maintain and continue to do that, okay? Catching it early, okay? Catching it early. Let's say, everybody, even I have heat man tendencies where I don't make time to go to the doctor and get my preventive checkup. Well, uh, you need to go let a doctor look at your body, just like you need to go get your oil changed in your car every so many miles. They pay for that, okay? This year, they lowered, uh, they lowered for male, for the colonoscopy, they lowered it from fifty down to forty-five. Why? Because there's more people getting colon cancer, okay? So please go get your checkup for, well, for one, help you hold your price down. Because it's cheaper to take your medication than after the big claim. Two, because, uh, really, uh, because for your family, okay? You need to be there, be healthy for your loved ones, okay? Y'all have any questions or complaints or anything I can do for you?
Yes, sir, Mr. Gray. How you doing today?
Yeah, I'm doing well.
So when we were self-funded, when we, are we out, are we still in line when we were self-funded? I know we self-funded, we were paying like about six, what, about six eighty-two, I think?
Yeah, alright, so right here, I highlighted this prior to. If you flip to the previous page. So the good thing about this plan, y'all, y'all didn't have to pay out four times. You know, if you self-funded those claims, you'd have noticed them originally. You didn't have to fund. When y'all do your budgets, you just, the number I'm giving you, it doesn't matter if you got ten million dollars in claims. That's the number you budget for. Covers everything. But under your self-funded plan, you, that year, it was renewing for a maximum of six seventy-two, okay? That was two years ago. We're at six thirty-three, so we're still less than that, okay? Even if everybody went into the hospital and everybody, it was a worst-case scenario, um, it would be, the most you'd be out would be six thirty-three an employee per month. And that took you, took you out of that risk. A few years ago, six seventy-two, if y'all had these big claims going into a self-funded contract, that price may be eight hundred dollars match, you know? So it's really not even a fair comparison. It's a lot better price for you, a lot less risk, so.
One more question.
Yeah. Sorry I'm talking in circles and taking a lot of data, but yeah.
One more question. Compared to other municipalities, I know you serve the grain, really serve the far state. I know they have a lot, I think they've been showing us one or two.
Well, yes, sir. We, we've been blessed with a lot, to be able to cover a lot of municipalities. A lot of municipalities are going up thirty, thirty-something percent. Y'all's, y'all's, uh, we've got one that's fifty-something percent, okay? So it's just medicines and stuff coming out. I, I don't know, you know, everybody, in COVID, a lot of people with, with prior existing conditions, you know, they, they went to meet the Lord, okay? A lot of people that were sick, a lot of them passed away and unhealthy people passed away, uh, unfortunately. But we all got some shots that's supposed to be good for us. Who knows if it was good for us or not? That's still debatable. And now it just seems like every time somebody gets a cold, it's harder to shake it. I don't know if it's age or if it's because we took a whole bunch of shots, who knows? So, but, but now medications are coming out to take care of that, you know? And that costs more money too. So, I, I don't know, but I know your plan pays. That's the only thing that matters to me if you need to use it. And, uh, it's good insurance. And, uh, and then also just to remember, we've had the same price for two years, well, five to seven percent inflation each year, okay? That's not counting everybody getting a year older.
That's correct.
But we were able to hold that price. So nothing wrong, the plan's a great plan. And I'm sorry it's going up, but I'm happy it paid well.
Okay. Well, Andrew, we appreciate your business.
Hey, look, we, I want to make sure everybody knows Affordable Employee Benefits loves Greenwood. We appreciate y'all having us here, okay?
Okay.
And he said it pays, that's a good part about it, pays. Thank you for that. And we still doing that though, when we self-funded?
Yeah, y'all are still doing better than, than what you were doing.
It's just safe to go on.
Yes, sir, yeah.
Okay, Andrew. Next, we have Ms. Asher Farmer, CVB, CVB budget.
Hey, I gave y'all all one on your table, on your desk. Um, I had to cut my budget about a hundred and sixty thousand this year, so that kind of hurt. We had got, we had so much money in the bank three years ago and it's just kind of caught up with us, so we had to do a major adjustment. Um, y'all have to approve this according to my Senate deal. And with that being said, part of the budget is the firework for the Christmas parade, which we gone up to fifteen thousand a few years ago. Well, I'm having to cut that down to ten thousand and with the tariffs, that's even cut into that money. So I was gonna ask the city if y'all might can help with that five thousand this year so we can still have a wonderful firework every year at the Christmas parades. Firework is the highlight of the evening, so, um, I don't know how to go about doing that except just ask if y'all would guess, consider...
Send a letter.
Okay.
Send a letter.
And we've had some great things going on. I had a family from Zill here this Monday. We've had so many international travelers through Greenwood and the Delta this summer. Um, we've got five hundred people, made five hundred bags for the Emmett Till interactive thing next Friday, next weekend. So that's huge, all those people hit Greenwood. And, um, and then we got, I did a want to bid for next October, two or three hundred people. And then the fraternity that the mayor's in, their national meeting is gonna be in Greenwood next August. That's like five hundred men and families. So we've got some good things coming up. Just kind of keep pushing.
Keep pushing, okay. Alrighty. I had some, uh, my sister had some friends from Memphis came in. They called, you talked to them?
Yeah, I had them all entertained. I met them in the lobby.
Okay, great, then, great.
Thank y'all.
Okay.
One more question, Ms. Asher. We usually start in September without, without, without singing going on. Might come in, what, once, first Friday every month. Are we still doing that too now?
Well, I cut that out of my budget right now. Push Puppies doing, you know, their concert series. I was just gonna take a break and then try to recruit some funds and start that over again.
No problem. Thank you, for sure.
Ashley did a good job.
Till I send that on there, gentlemen.
So, Ms. Ashley, when, when your, uh, budget's supposed to be on our agenda?
Uh, I start October first.
Okay. Alright, so it'd be on our agenda before October first, don't you say?
I think we usually have a resolution in September.
Y'all just get a resolution.
Just a resolution in, okay.
I'll have it next.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Next, we have Ms. Lynn McCool with the Florida County Humane Society. Their budget. Is she here today? Uh, is it Cambrella Mitchell? Okay, Ms. Cambrika. And Cameron Abel, Boys and Girls Club?
Yes, sir.
How y'all doing?
Cam and Cam.
Okay. Is that what I should just say? Cam and Cam, huh?
That's how kids do it.
Yeah. Thank you, sir.
You got it all?
Good evening. Thank you for allowing us to come and speak to you all today. I am Cambrika Mitchell. I am directly from Greenwood Boys and Girls Club. This is Mr. Cameron Abel, he's our chief financial officer of the Boys and Girls Club of Mississippi Delta. Our CEO, Mr. Dallas Douglas, apologies, he's currently working with children right now to finish program that he's trying to incorporate throughout the Boys and Girls Club of the Delta. First, we would like to say thank you for your support for the Boys and Girls Club and all of the contributions you all have made to us. Um, last year, you all contributed twenty-five thousand dollars to our organization. And this year, we're asking for the same contribution. We have, um, twenty-five thousand dollars last year helped us tremendously in our efforts with our programming, um, the staff, all the things and the upkeeps of the Boys and Girls Club. Uh, the Boys and Girls Club is seen as a, to, um, a way to bridge the gap with children, not only academically, but socially and emotionally. At our organization, we provide tutoring services. We have, um, other different programs that we run. Our most newest program that we have right now is culinary arts. We have been able to sustain our gardening program for the past two years. Um, within our, within my year here, we have doubled the attendance. Um, we went from having thirty children to having almost seventy children. Um, we do operate from three to seven. Um, we help a lot of families out, a lot of parents do not get off at the normal times at four o'clock. Some of them have jobs where they're off at five, six, or seven. We do offer transportation to the children. And we would just like your support going forward this year to continue to go and destitute productive citizens within our community.
Okay.
If you all have any questions, myself and Mr. Abel here to answer any questions you want me to.
Yes, sir, Johnny.
Y'all got a nice grant the other day I saw on television, twenty thousand?
We could get them periodically. When you consider that the organization, the larger organization is opening its tenth club across eight counties, right? And so that larger organization gets an unrestricted funding. Uh, the Greenwood Club runs in a deficit, but the larger organization fills that in with unrestricted funding. So when we get twenty thousand, uh, it's part of many grants that we get. And we have gotten some. We got Dollar General Grant, just within the past couple, which is Rachel Ray Grant to help with culinary arts. So our resource development, um, is hard and pins them. And we all kind of pitch in on grant writing, but that's a constant effort. We make a concerted effort not to depend on one funding stream, if that makes sense. Especially with federal monies right now, we're kind of on the chopping block. We're not sure where they're going. Uh, and I would tell you that we have rebudgeted the entire organization based on that. Uh, I won't say we moved into an austerity period, but everything is just up in the air right now. TANF is our biggest source of income through the Mississippi Department of Human Services. Mississippi Department of Education gives us a nice chunk of change, but see, that's restricted only to Cleveland, right? So depending on the club, depends on what its funding streams are. Every club has a different personality. Every town has a different personality. Uh, but y'all have supported us consistently. Last year, you gave us five thousand more than the year before. I think it's twenty thousand and the twenty thousand year before that. And we're certainly thankful for that. And I know, maybe we can just take thirty seconds, but there is a little story I want to tell. Um, my church, Episcopal Church of Nativity, does a foster child program. And so we were out at CPS one day and I was talking with a staff member and she pointed to me and she said, "I couldn't do it without you. I never get off work at five o'clock, ever." And I know where my daughter is. I know she is safe. I know somebody's helping her with her homework. I know she is being fed. She is going to have a good time. And when I pick her up and take her home, we get to enjoy the evening together. I'm a retired attorney. I took this job kind of going, "Oh goodness, is this what I really need to be doing?" In that moment, I knew, we accomplished our mission and we did good work for the Lord and this community. Uh, and I'm proud of the work Ms. Mitchell does. She's a licensed certified teacher who's taken this on. Uh, and in her first year, we have seen attendance go up. The programming, they learned how to change tires this summer. Like, she's creative, she does amazing work. And all the issues we have in this community, after-school programs are key. Whether it's us, whether it's Hill Clay, whether it's the community center or the Florida Legacy has after-school programming, that's where we can put our support. That three to seven time period is crucial to these children and making sure that they are safe, fed, doing their homework, and having a good time. Having a good time. So we definitely try to do our best and we keep our eye on that mission and we appreciate y'all's continued support.
Y'all did a good job, y'all. It's amazing how that's grown, Boys and Girls Club in Greenwood with the doctor's office, y'all got down there at headquarters and I was involved with it for several years. And so was Don. And, uh, we, um, it's just hard, hard. And many go down there and just see those kids, they are, they're in a good place.
They are. And we'd like to expand, not just on the Carrollton Avenue, uh, you know, west side, north side. We're looking at that, but again, it's time to clamp down right now until we have a little bit, idea, a better idea on where those funding streams are going to be impacted. Because those are all federal monies come through state agencies and we just don't know with the future of the world. So, um, so we're doing our best for fundraising. Uh, and Ms. Mitchell is doing a fantastic job. We could not be more proud of her.
Thank y'all for coming and keep up the good work, okay?
Thank you.
Alrighty. Okay, next we have Ms. Shalonda Byrd, Reviving Youth Ministry. Is she here today?
Good evening everyone, how you doing? Alright, I'm Shalonda Byrd here today, representing Reviving Youth Ministry. Reviving Youth is getting ready to apply for the HPV Housing Preservation Grant, the USDA rule development. And as a part of our paperwork process, we have to come before the city council and we're asking you all support.
Okay, okay. Alrighty. Uh, do you need a resolution?
Yes, sir, please. And I was talking with a staff member, and she pointed to me and she said, I couldn't do it without you. I never get off work at five o'clock, ever. And I know where my daughter is. I know she is safe. I know somebody's helping her with her homework. I know she is being fed. She is going to have a good time. And when I pick her up and take her home, we get to enjoy the evening together. I'm a retired attorney. I took this job kind of going, oh goodness, is this what I really need to be doing? In that moment, I knew we accomplished our mission and we did good work for the Lord and this community.
Right.
Uh, and I'm proud of the work Ms. Mitchell does. She's a licensed certified teacher who's taken this on. Uh, and in her first year, we have seen attendance go up. Uh, the programming, they learned how to change tires this summer.
Wow.
Like, she's creative. She does amazing work. And all the issues we have in this community, after-school programs are key.
Exactly.
Whether it's us, whether it's Hill Clay, whether it's the community center, or the Florida Legacy has after-school programming, that's where we can put our support.
Wow.
That three to seven time period is crucial to these children and making sure that they are safe, fed, doing their homework, and having a good time. Having a good time. So we definitely try to do our best and we keep our eye on that mission and we appreciate y'all's continued support.
Y'all did a good job, y'all. It's amazing how that's grown, Boys and Girls Club in Greenwood with the doctor's office y'all got down there as headquarters. And I was involved with it for several years. And so was Don. And um, we um, it's just hard. Hard to, many go down there and just see those kids. They are, they're in a good place.
They are. And we'd like to expand, not just on the Carrollton Avenue, um, you know, west side, north side. We are looking at that, but again, it's time to clamp down right now until we have a little bit idea, a better idea on where those funding streams are gonna be impacted. Because those are all federal monies come through state agencies, and we just don't know with the future of the world. So um, so we're doing our best for fundraising. Uh, and Ms. Mitchell is doing a fantastic job. We could not be more proud of her.
Okay.
Thank y'all.
Thank y'all for coming and keep up the good work, okay?
Thank you.
Alrighty. Okay, next we have Ms. Shalonda Byrd, Reviving Youth Ministry. Is she here today?
Good evening everyone. How you doing? Alright, I'm Shalonda Byrd here today, representing Revival to Youth Ministry. Revival Youth is getting ready to apply for the HPV Housing Preservation Grant for USDA rule development. And as a part of our paperwork process, we have to come before the city council, and we're asking you all support.
Okay, okay. Alrighty. Uh, do you need a resolution?
Yes, sir, please.
Uh, supporting that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, okay. Alrighty, when you have to turn your grant in?
Uh, it's due on the September fourth, but we want to have all our paperwork in, you know, by the end of the month.
Okay, so we we can have a resolution, September the fourth? When is our next meeting, y'all?
The second.
The second?
I think so.
You have it by the third? That's pushing it. Is that okay with you? We have your resolution on the next agenda.
Okay, and what's that date?
September second.
September second?
Yes, ma'am.
That refined as we.
And we appreciate you. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. Alrighty. You got that to do though?
I do.
Okay, thank you, sir. Alright, next is Ms. Margorie Mees. Appointments?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I'm here as a um concerned citizen, the city of Greenwood. I am a little baffled as to uh what is happening uh with respect to um the transition during the new administration. Um, I'm just really baffled. Uh, when I look back, um, um, look to the taxpayers' channel, July second, two thousand nine. Um, the new mayor at the time, along with seven members of this council, all of the members, were sworn in in this chamber. But yet, with uh this new administration, this time, the swearing-in ceremony did not take place here in the chamber, uh, in the council chamber. But it took place with six of the seven members at uh the VFW in North Greenwood on June nineteenth, which is June tenth. And um, I I'm just a, I'm just a little baffled by that, uh, trying to understand um what the uh stalemate is. So as I researched, I've actually found that this is not a new issue for the city of Greenwood. It goes back a little bit. Uh, I found attorney general, uh attorney general opinions that were written to a previous mayor, previous uh board attorney, and a previous uh member of this council. Uh, but what I want to point out is there is an opinion that I believe is on point. Uh, and this opinion, um, it's dated February twenty-fifth, twenty-eleven, and it's written to James Anderson, who was a special assistant to the city attorney for the city of Jackson. And the city of Jackson operates by the mayor council form of government, just like Greenwood. And in this opinion, uh, the issue presented was, in a mayor council form of government, are members of the city council authorized to participate in the nomination process of an individual being considered by the mayor for appointment to a board? More specifically, is the mayor required to nominate individuals whose names have been submitted to the council members to the mayor for nomination? And the short answer, uh, response is no. Council members are not authorized to participate in the nomination of individuals by the mayor. The role of the council is limited to confirming or rejecting such nominations. The mayor is not required to nominate individuals whose names have been submitted by council members to the mayor for nomination. And so the opinion goes on to talk about the separation of powers doctrine. The mayor, um, is in the executive branch of government. The council is in the legislative branch of government. And according to this opinion, the mayor exercises the executive powers of the municipality. And the opinion goes on to say, there is no role for council members to participate in the nomination or appointment process since it is executive in nature. And the opinion concludes, it is the opinion of this office that council members are not authorized to participate in the nomination of individuals by the mayor. The role of the council is limited to confirming or rejecting such nominations. The mayor is not required to nominate individuals whose names have been submitted by council members to the mayor for nomination. And then the Mississippi Supreme Court, in Jordan B. Smith, says that confirmation should not be withheld without good cause. And so here, for uh appointments that have been presented, this council has not articulated anything after rejecting several of mayor's nominations. Um, the council, as all governmental entities, speaks through its minutes, and there is nothing reflected in the minutes. I attended the meeting. I've attended the meetings, and there has not been anything articulated that would give us, there's nothing. It votes down. There is no explanation for what that good cause is. And so according to this authority, the council's role is to confirm or reject, up or down. And if you uh reject, there should be good cause provided. And so I would hope that going forward, uh, that you would take this into consideration to facilitate us getting out of this stalemate, which Greenwood appears to have a little history with, so that we can get on to uh enjoying uh Greenwood and um uh making things better for the citizens of Greenwood. Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Alright, Kim, alright.
Can we, Mr. President?
Okay. Yes, ma'am, Ms. Kilkis.
We, we did address some of the reasons in executive session. Something we're not allowed to ever do to talk about, like salaries and things like that. So we, we do, we have never nominated anybody or tried to get in his business as far as nominations. And we have voted up or down, vote according to our conscience. So others, there are some things that we can't get into, but I will say having a budget would be a big help in um knowing if we can hire or appoint these people. Because we all know what salaries we can afford at this time. And that's it.
Okay, well, we'll take you. Alright, alright. No other comments. We go ahead next to our policy issue agenda, number four. Number five, we have our routine item agenda. Under that is the consent agenda. Any question under the consent agenda today? We got, uh-huh.
On number three, but President, we have never had a comparative budget voted on. Uh, since I've been on the city council, and I may need to tell us what's going on with that. We normally get a budget can be over for five, five budget hearing, so you know what's going on. Now we got a comparative budget. Can't compare a budget, then compare a will.
Where is Linda?
Right here.
Okay, are you familiar with that, Linda?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear exactly.
Uh, the comparative budget. We don't, we hadn't received anything to vote on a comparative budget.
I sent you comparative budget. Vicki sent it to you. This is what it was prior month. It's it's down a month. It's muscling.
This is our first time having to done that way though. We normally get a, I have about a budget hearing or something. We go by budget, she will compare what we got with. And look about when we have it on those sheets, we flip it over and look at it quicker. This computer thing, I gotta flip through a hundred pages to get to the budget.
Right.
And that's, that's, that's a slow process. Hard to compare, uh, the budget.
So you want to print it out?
And you print it out. And also, don't even be voting, I'm not even be voting on it, to who, to who we're talking about.
You're, you're still talking about the budget itself. This is just showing what's been spent through.
I know, I know, but we never have received it out, uh, in an email or sent it. I always get a budget on it. Never voted on it either. Not by mistake. President, you call for voting, President?
I've never called for a vote on that.
That's President.
So then we want to check that out?
We, we, I need to pull that out, President. We've never voted on it before.
Or table it.
Table that, we'll table that.
Alright, being that we're gonna do that, I'm gonna take them one at a time this time.
Yes, sir.
And we'll vote on them, okay? First one approved of the August fifth, twenty twenty-five city council meetings. Share entertaining motion?
I so move.
Motion made and second. Any further? All in favor, right hand. Pose the same sign, motion carried. Order the city council receiving the private license report for the city clerk for the month of July twenty twenty-five.
So moved.
I second that, President.
Okay, motion been made and been second. All in favor, right hand. Pose the same sign, motion carried. Number three, comparative budget. We just, we're gonna table it or what you want?
Let's table it. You can quit on standing.
Okay. Okay. Share entertaining motion?
I so move, table it, President.
Motion been made and second, the table number three, the comparative budget. All in favor, right hand. Pose the same sign, motion carried. Four various budget adjustments. Any question on the budget adjustment? Have anybody looked at them?
I looked at them, President. I have one president on public work, public work. We have appointed Darwin Green to public director, but he signed off on his most, on his uh budget, uh, adjustment. And I think the mayor should have signed off on his budget just to the Darwin Green, since he hasn't been appointed yet to the, to position. Uh, you, you, what we do, if he appointed a position, then he can sign off on it. But he signed off on him and appointed a position.
The mayor should, should have been saying by the mayor.
He mentioned sign on it, I think. So he signed off on it.
He has signed off on them. Those were the original from the war documents. I just scanned them and y'all, the mayor Cox has also signed off on all of them.
Including this one?
Yes, sir.
But President, uh, hold on, let him finish. I, I, there's no problem. The mayor signed off on it.
Yes, sir.
But we got two signatures on this, on this, on this budget just, President. Like we do on all of them, President. It's not just one signature. It's two signatures. Should have been on the one. That should have been the mayor only. Shouldn't have been anybody pointing that position yet. That's for marking, President.
Okay.
Thank you, President.
Okay, Ms. Queen.
Okay. I think we cleared that up about Darwin Green. And like they just said, the mayor signed off on it. So what's the problem now? What's the problem?
First of all, if you ain't, if you don't clear what we're talking about.
I don't understand. I, I'm clear with you.
Well, President.
You always talking about Darwin Green.
Yes, ma'am.
Shouldn't sign off against it.
Yes, ma'am.
But the mayor cleared that up in executive session.
The mayor didn't clear it up.
He did clear it up.
President, let's move on, President.
Okay, what, what, what is being said on the budget adjustment, you're right, it's cleared up. So if it's cleared up that Mr. Green is not public work director, he has signed off on this budget adjustment. He had, and the mayor have not signed off on it. So we need the mayor to sign off on this budget adjustment.
She's on one signature.
One signature on the mail.
Thank you, President.
So that's, that's the, the difference though. So if it's cleared up, and you understand, Ms. Green, I mean, Ms. Ms. Darwin, that uh, it's cleared up. Darwin Green name shouldn't be on it.
Okay.
And his name is on it.
Okay, Vicki, Darwin name's on it now?
Yes, it's on there.
So that's the, that, that is the issue, the problem. Okay. So, how, uh, instead of rejecting it, is basically table it?
Yes, we'll table it.
Uh, yes, let, let's just table it.
They're just table it.
Until we can get it.
And not reject it.
We sign up to this for proper way.
And you're, and have the mayor sign.
Yes, sir, thank you, President.
Okay. And uh, that's your motion, Mr. McCoy.
I so move, President, and get it resigned by then.
Get it resigned, okay.
Send it to the council again.
Alright. Alright, motion made and been second. All in favor, right hand, please. Pose the same sign, motion carried.
Right. Quick question.
Yes.
Is that just for that one budget adjustment that's tabled or all of them?
Just that one. Just that one. All the other ones, we pass on them.
Yeah, the rest of it, I'll, I'll sit into the process.
Okay, do we need to put that in a motion then, that way?
Yes.
Okay.
From just one for public work department.
Okay.
Take it.
Okay, just the one?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And I think everybody's still good with that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, alright.
I think we need, you need to vote on that.
Alright.
All of them.
Okay.
Sides for McCoy.
Okay, alright. That's Mr. McCoy motion and Mr. Palmer second. All in favor, right hand. Pose the same sign, motion carried. Number five, any questions under the docket of claims? Share entertaining motion?
I so move.
Motion been made and been second. Any further? All in favor, right hand, please. Pose the same sign, motion carried. Routine items agenda. Number one, a resolution approving the rules of conduct for the city council meeting of the seat of Greenwood, Mississippi. I think last meeting you all received the rules of conduct. Share entertaining motion, no question?
No question.
Alright, motion been made and been second. All in favor, right hand, please. Pose the same sign, motion carried. Uh, number two, a resolution of the city council of the seat of Greenwood, Mississippi, approving a facility management agreement with Karen Burns for the management of the car center.
I make that motion. I have a question on that.
Yes.
Okay. The mayor, uh, dismissed her about three weeks ago, right? He did dismiss her from the car center. So I have a problem with that. If he may have made that adjustment to remove her. So we, we're not supposed to go against him to let her be a proponent of facility management agreement with her. We can get somebody else. That's not right. Because he did remove her three weeks ago.
His reason, as he said last week, to my knowledge, is there were no contract.
Yeah.
And that's what we're doing, putting the contract in order. He wanted a contract.
But he kept reading from this here, the text, text here. And I think the mayor need to be, be here to hear, to hear about this, because I'm not in agreement with this at all.
Okay.
Because it's going, it's going against the mayor. It's going against him and what he want to do. And I don't agree with that at all. And I'm not voting for it.
Okay.
The mayor's the one that put it on here. Is that right?
No, we put it on. Alright, can we have uh everybody attention? That's, uh, this is outburst, honestly, can't go on. Okay, we need quiet in the audience. Thank you. Okay, go ahead, Ms. Palmer.
No, I thought maybe he put it on here since, uh, the, uh, what do you call it? The con- contract was put in place.
And that was, that was my understanding. He wanted a contract.
Right.
Right.
And Mayor Cox is aware of it. I emailed the resolution.
So he is aware of it, and he didn't have a problem with it?
Well, I didn't. I think I got an email back that said things.
Ms. Cookston had.
Well, President, one question. Attorney, we also said something about some insurance though. Did Ms. Bird get her insurance already covered on this?
I emailed her uh insurance agent yesterday with a copy of it. My understanding is she was getting that liability insurance in place. I've not received it yet, but I'll make sure that, that we did. It was a million dollar aggregate policy.
And couldn't get a copy of it when she get it in place?
Absolutely. I'll, I'll email the council and the mayor with that.
Thank you.
Alright, Ms. Cookston has a motion on the floor.
I second that, President.
Alright, motion been made and second. All in favor, right hand, please. Pose the same sign, motion carried. Number three, a resolution appointing Carla Williams as the city clerk for the seat of Greenwood, Mississippi.
I so move.
Share entertaining second? Motion died like a second. Number four, a resolution appointing Darwin Green as public work director for the seat of Greenwood, Mississippi.
I so move.
Share entertaining second? Died for the lack of second. Number three, a resolution appointing Marvin Russell as Community Development Director for the seat of Greenwood, Mississippi.
I so move.
Motion been made and been second. Any further? All in favor, right hand, please. Pose the same sign, motion carried. Mr. Russell is here. Congratulations, Mr. Russell, on your new job. Okay. A rush, a resolution appointing Demetrius Beadle as Police Chief for the seat of Greenwood, Mississippi. I don't know why we entertaining this one again.
I so move. Because you still can entertain it.
Okay. We got a motion. Do we have a second? Motion has died for the lack of second. Number seven, a resolution appointing Shanteria Flowers as Chief Administrator Officer for the seat of Greenwood, Mississippi.
I so move.
Share entertaining second? Motion died for the lack of second. Let me ask this. Anybody, uh, besides Marvin is here that has been appointed that was on the agenda today? Okay.
Is this a word where you give reasons about why?
Well, and that's what I was finna say. I mean, these nominations are on the agenda. Well, and that's what I was finna say. I mean, these nominations are on the agenda. None of us have, can put a face with the name. They are not here. We can't ask them any questions. And we just cannot vote and don't know anybody. We don't even know these people. So Marvin is here today. He's only somebody here and he got voted in. Nobody else is here. So, and, and, and I'm sure Ms. Carla Williams, if, if she could, I would have voted for her. But, and I know her, she lives in Ward 3, and I say that proudly and loudly. I would have voted for her. Uh, but she's not here for the council to get to know her. Ms. Flowers has been up here a couple of times. And I told, and I said this to Ms. Flowers. I would support Ms. Flowers. The council does not know her. She needs to be here in case we have any questions or anything. I think these people need to come in. And the good thing about it is being that there's no vote. They still maybe can come back. Because if I, if we second it and we vote them down, I don't think they can come back. So maybe them getting to know, we getting to know these people would help. So that is by information. We do not know these people. We need to know them. Because we have an obligation to our constituents, just like everybody else. And we wants to know these people. We can't even put a face. I'm sure some of the council people cannot put a face to these people. You know, if you get, coming up here for these important jobs for the city of Greenwood, at least be at the meeting. That's what we saying. So that's my reason. Ms. Green?
Okay, you can't put a face to Bedell. You don't, don't know Demetrius Bedell.
I know Mr. Demetrius Bedell.
Okay, then.
But he need, if, but what if somebody had a question? They wanted to ask him. Say they wanted to ask him his certification. We need, he needs to be here for certification. If, I'm just saying if.
That, excuse me. That's the reason?
No, no, I'm just saying whatever's hypothetical. That's not the reason. Mr. McCoy and then Ms. Ms. Jen.
Brother, he made it clear he possibly could, brother. You know, anybody down for, for me, need to contact the city council so we can find out what's going on. We need to know the qualification, not all that. We have to question him too. In the past though, when Harris Smith was mayor here, he bought each one's appointment. I know his appointment, the mayor's appointment. He bought each one's appointment before the city council. We all got a chance to talk to his appointment. When Sheriff Perkins did the same thing. Mac Allen did the same thing. So this, this is not anything that need, that been happening in Greenwood though. We need to get him to come to us and talk to us. You know, I, I follow them on this side there, and, and they can come out and talk to us one by one. We can hopefully have a, have a conversation. And we have to question him actually. You know, I, I received a couple of phone calls. It was Marvin Russell calling me. Can anybody visit me too? We talk, ask questions him. You know, I can make that intelligent decision and vote if I know, if I can talk to this person and get a feel for him though. We need to do that though. You know, that's something we gonna work. And we worked in the past, we should be working now. Communication is very important. I said it from day one though, we got to communicate one though. And it seemed like the mayor not gonna communicate with the city council. He just said one thing and do another thing. We gotta come forth and talk to us too. Is it a appointment? We gotta, we gotta, we gotta confirm it though. You can't confirm nothing, nothing he's not telling us about to the last minute. General come out on Friday, we get it on Friday, we look at it, look at it, and we don't know what's going on? What's on the agenda? And like Captain said, these same names going here again. We don't know that. Tell us, talk to us. So you all can make a intelligent decision though, about, about these appointments though. It's embarrassing to bring these folk down here and we vote them down. And it's embarrassing. We shouldn't go through that. No one should go through that. Bring them down here, one more, and let's talk to them. So we can see what's going on. Now, thank you, President.
Thank you. Okay. Oh, Mr. J, I'm sorry, Mr. Jennings.
Um, I just have one question. I know Demetrius ran for sheriff three or four times. And then ran against this sheriff that's a sheriff down. So five times, the majority of the voters in Greenwood voted him down.
Yeah.
And now, your mayor wants to circumvent y'all, the majority voters of Greenwood, and put him in as sheriff. So what he's saying is, he's not listening to y'all, and he's gonna put him in as sheriff. Regardless of what y'all did the last four, five elections. You didn't elect him as sheriff. Why? That's, that's somebody, call me on the phone, 662-299-3400, and tell me why y'all didn't elect him. You know, I, I may have voted for him once or twice, but the majority of the people in this town did not. And now, he is disregarding y'all's wishes in five elections and going, try to put him as, as police chief. So process that a little bit. And, and answer this question is, why didn't y'all elect him sheriff? Why? Why?
Okay, Jen, talking to us. You talking to us. I'm trying to get the audience to be quiet. You ran them up.
I like that question.
You ran them up.
But I would like that question.
Well, okay, Johnny, you had, this is a council meeting, okay? We're not talking to... Okay. Can we have everybody's attention? Ms. Ms. Go ahead.
Jen, that doesn't have anything to do with that.
That's true.
About him running, a man can't, it does not have anything to do with it. Because he have skills and everything. He has a resume and been given to us. So what you're talking about, I don't buy into that. Because I present a lot of people in politics doing different things that they choose to do, and they represent different peoples.
That's true.
They do represent, uh-huh, that's true. And I mean what I say. Okay? And y'all mean what you say.
Okay.
Mine was just a question, darling.
Let's move on. Let's move on from this. And that was just, it was my explanation. Uh, that is, uh, the end of our meeting. As you see, we got... Oh, Ms., I'm sorry, Ms. Palmer.
Uh, we were talking about the people who've been nominated.
Right.
Supposed to be appointed. Not just showing up at the meeting and we asking questions.
Right.
They can meet us outside the meeting. The mayor can bring them into his office. At least we can ask questions. Or we can come up to the conference room and, you know, we can interview them.
And we've done that in the past. We've done that a lot in the past.
Yeah, we will get to know them.
Right. We've done that in the past. A lot. Everybody had to interview different people.
Exactly.
Uh-huh.
I saw it just here ten minutes ago. Who done that in the past? Who did it with Harris Smith? Who done it with Sheriff Perkins? Who done it with Mac Allen? Why can't do it now? It just make, make, makes sense. Thank you, President.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Alright, the study agenda. Uh, the House for the Board of Appeals.
What is that?
Well, I mean, we got to eventually do a House for the Board of Appeals. As I said in the past, to me, we got Dr. Marjorie Pullman and Mr. Charles Brooks on here. Why they are two, but both, to me, both good people. I would support either one. Uh, we had an appointment that we sent to the mayor. That person should have been on here. And I think all three of them would have been good people. So we just gotta make some decisions. Uh, or get the county to make some decision. They hadn't made any decision either. I don't know why they're making us choose between the two. Uh, two good people, you know. But that's, that's a, uh, a job, or something that, or an appointment we need to fulfill soon as possible.
I like the suggestion that we brought to the county.
So, President. I have another question, President.
Yes, sir.
On that study agenda, President, I think you attached two resolutions to be voted on today. On that, on that, on that resolution.
Where it's not on the, we, we, amended, amended?
Yeah, no, no. But I'm saying, it's, it's on that, it's on the agenda though. It's on the study agenda. And I've never seen a study agenda with two names on it and then a resolution attached to the vote on it. That's kind of out of order.
You know what I'm saying? So what if we voted for both of them?
As out of what came.
You can't for both of them, right. Right.
That's out of order, so I don't know.
But it's saying study agenda.
It's on the study, huh?
It's on the study agenda.
I also, go down further. It also got a loser play to vote on.
For both of them?
Both of them.
You gotta look at your computer.
We're all down to the last one. She's gonna sit down there.
It's on the agenda.
Okay. That's, that's my question talking about. Sorry. Thank you, President.
Okay.
Well, let me. So we need to come up with one person name from the county?
No, we need to, this is a county-city appointment. We need to come up with a person, and the county need to come up with one. Not two, one.
Okay.
Not two. The county came up with two. Why they put that pressure on us, I don't know. But they need to come up with one, and we need to come up with one. Or vote one of the two that they did come up with and, or tell them to pick one of the two and bring it back to us. Or pick one of the three.
So we should do that? We need to...
I put it on the study agenda so we can make some sound decisions in the near future on, on one of the three people.
Okay.
Okay.
But President, one question. Did the county vote on one of those?
No, they had, they just voted to send us them two. And we sent them one. And they didn't vote on our one, at least tell us no or something, you know. And this was before they sent us the two. We sent them one several months ago.
I remember that.
Right. We sent them one and we hadn't heard anything.
They saw us the two.
And then, then, and then give us the one answer. If they give us no, then we focus on the two. That's what I'm thinking how it should be done. If they saying no, then we focus on the two they sent. Yeah, that's the way I see it. Because it needs to be done. I'm tired of the back and forth.
Yeah, it needs to be done.
Yeah.
I agree on that.
Yeah. It needs to be done. Okay. No other question? Mean the journey?